Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call the order, the Everett City Council Meeting of August 20th, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. We have a big crowd tonight. I'm very thankful. Thank you for all your involvement and your passion and what and how much you guys all care for our city. Thank you. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Franklin, here. Councilmember Bader.
Excused.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Vogel.
Here.
Councilmember Fosse.
Here.
Councilmember Toohey.
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Here.
President Schwab.
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Toohey to read the land acknowledgement.
Certainly. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahuchi people and their successors, the Tlalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. So on to old business. Do I hear motion to approve the minutes for August 13th, 2025?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Seconded.
Motion seconds are made. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. I'll apologize in advance because I have a few lengthy comments and then a couple presentations, so bear with me. First, I'll be very sorry to miss your meeting next week, but Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck invited me to attend a roundtable on housing. The goal is to share ideas and support efforts to help combat the severe housing shortage in Washington State. As we all know and have been working towards, our residents deserve a safe place to live and housing options that meet their needs. And our team here, the council in our city, have been housing champions. And so look forward to sharing our strategies and learning from other communities on this important issue. As I know you've heard, Kroger made the decision to close Fred Meyer on Casino and Evergreen effective October 18th, which is incredibly, incredibly disappointing. Our city team and I have worked very closely with Fred Meyer staff and Kroger leadership over the last several years to support that store's success because we know how essential that is for so many families in our community. We've worked together to address challenges that were impacting staff at the store and customers, and we've directed significant resources to strategically support this location, including regular meetings with store leadership, extensive emphasis patrols, sting operations targeting shoplifting, consistent care team outreach to individuals in the area, and the establishment of a high-impact public safety buffer zone around the store. These actions led to very meaningful progress. Crime at the store dropped by nearly half last year alone, and the surrounding areas saw a 36% decrease in offenses from 2023 to 2024. Shoplifting saw the most dramatic change, decreasing by 82% since 2020. And those numbers continue to trend down in 2025. Despite this progress, Kroger's leadership decided to close this store while also shutting down many other locations across the state with more to come, leaving many communities reeling as they consider grocery accessibility for working-class families. The closure of this store has a real impact, particularly on residents who don't have easy access to transportation. I think about the mother whose lengthy grocery trip carrying many bags on foot could now become much longer, require public transportation or other resources, and that reality is not lost on our city teams. To help support our community, staff have already launched an outreach plan and created a one-page resource guide highlighting nearby grocery options and other important services. We're committed to ensuring residents are aware of smaller neighborhood grocers like Los Gavilanas, Pacific Grocery Market, and Evergreen Asian Market, as well as Safeway. While this closure presents challenges, my team and I are already working with the community focused on mitigating the impacts of this closure and looking ahead to opportunities for the future redevelopment of the site. And I look forward to working with all of you on that as well. Next, we have a very special guest here with us tonight, Gage Bryant from Cedar Woolley, who is receiving the lifesaver award from our Everett Fire Department. Before Chief DeMarco comes forward, I just want to say, on behalf of the city of Everett, I want to express our incredible appreciation to Gage. Gage was incredibly brave, and thanks to his willingness to step up when someone was in trouble, a real tragedy was avoided. I also want to commend his family, who's raising a truly wonderful young man. And with that, I'll invite Chief DeMarco forward.
All right. Good evening, council. Dave DeMarco of the Fire Department. Got some guests joining us here at the podium tonight. I'm gonna try to work through this without getting emotional because this is, uh, this is quite a story. All right. So our department finds everyday heroes on a regular basis. Everett is a great community where neighbors will always reach out to help each other when the need arises. It would be impossible to recognize them all, but occasionally there's an event where the community responds in such a way that they deserve special attention. Tonight, we'll do that and honor some of our courageous neighbors with a Citizen Lifesaver Award. So tonight, in the room is the victim of this tragedy, and we're not going to bring him up. And he's just here to observe with his family, and we're grateful for that. His mother and father and siblings are here as well. On July 8th, 2025, what began as a typical summer afternoon at Silver Lake at Thornton-Sullivan Park quickly transformed into an emergency, uniting neighbors from all walks of life into a simple purpose, which was to save a life. Elia Hernandez, who's not here tonight unfortunately, was at the end of the park dock with her children as they played when she realized that a child who had recently got into the water couldn't be accounted for and had not resurfaced. Initially thinking he might be swimming and playing with another child underwater, she soon became concerned and asked those around her to check under the dock. At the same time, Trenton's mom, Stephanie, also recognized that her son was missing and began to look for him. Thirteen-year-old Gage, standing here with me tonight, was swimming nearby when he learned a child was missing. Without hesitation, he dove beneath the water to search for the boy. After initially not seeing anyone under the water, he borrowed a pair of goggles and dove again. It was then that he spotted the victim underwater beneath the dock. With sheer determination, he dove down again, wrapped his arms around the boy, and brought him to the surface. Despite the challenges of the rescue, his perseverance paid off, and he successfully brought the child up to the surface where others were able to lift him onto the dock. Within moments, a group of friends enjoying their day at the park heard cries for help at the dock. Among them were Pam Olson, Jennifer Fuller, and Jacqueline Zaruka, all of whom are emergency room nurses. Rushing to the dock with several other community members, they began life-saving CPR. Our firefighters arrived within minutes of the dispatch, and thanks to the quick response of all of these people standing here tonight, they found the child was breathing and had regained a pulse after being underwater for several minutes. By the time he was placed in our paramedic unit, Trenton had already regained some consciousness. After spending several days in the hospital, we're happy to report that he's made a full recovery. While none of the rescuers here tonight sought recognition for these acts of bravery, they're here today to raise awareness about the critical importance of water safety and the value of learning lifesaving skills like CPR. The day after the incident, Gage participated in several media interviews with grace and humility. He expressed concern about the recognition he was receiving while the victim was still in the hospital recovering. His strong sense of duty drove him to emphasize that all he wanted to do was meet the child, ensure that he was okay, and hopefully become friends. He also shared his aspiration to join the military in the future, wishing to protect the country, demonstrating his commitment to learning lifesaving skills. We're happy to report that he was certified in CPR and first aid training just this afternoon in our building. The Everett Fire Department proudly recognizes the community members who played a crucial role in the successful outcome of this incident. Their quick and decisive actions during a time of crisis demonstrate the power of coming together. Today, we honor their bravery by presenting each rescuer with a Citizen Lifesaving Award. And as a token of our appreciation, they're also receiving the Everett Fire Department Marine Team patch and challenge coin. Their quick thinking not only saved a child's life, but also demonstrates the importance of community during emergencies. On that day, all the right people were in the right place for an extraordinary outcome, one that saved a life who's here tonight. So, thank you all. Counsel will be all right if they come by to say something.
Absolutely.
If they just pass around the back there.
Amazing. Thank you so much.
I'm glad we could be there.
Yes.
Happy to be able to help.
All right. Thank you.
Not a dry eye in the house. Thank you, truly, all four of you for your heroic efforts. And thank you, Chief DeMarco, for that well-deserved recognition. Lastly, I'm pleased to acknowledge Ukrainian Independence Day tomorrow, August 21st, with a proclamation. And I'll read just a few highlights. Whereas Ukrainian people have demonstrated for many years an unwavering commitment to preserving their history, culture, and national identity, often in the face of hardship and adversity. And August 24th, 1991, represents the day that Ukraine gained independence from the Soviet Union, marking a pivotal moment in its history and igniting hope and democracy of the Ukrainian people. And Ukraine Independence Day is a powerful symbol of resilience. And the city of Everett proudly recognizes the significance behind national identity and Ukraine's determination for democracy and their country's development. I encourage all Everett residents to recognize the significance of Ukrainian Independence Day and commemorate their heritage and culture. And John Van Patton is here, a resident and volunteer of Ukraine Defense Support. And I wanted to present the proclamation, and if you wanted to say a couple of words, you're welcome to.
I just wanted to speak out and say thank you very much for this. It's very important to the people and our people.
Could you please hit the button on your mic there?
It's green. So again, I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Franklin, for this. And my, for me, I'm an American-born citizen. I married a woman from Moldova, which is right next to Ukraine. And her kids were born in Ukraine. And we've had three, well, no, we've had one family, a refugee family, come stay with us. And they were really worried about it because they had a four-month-old baby. But they were trying to stay, and the building next to them got blown up, so they had to get out when the baby was two months old. And so they were with us like nine months. We got to see this little baby crawl, walk. Really good. They still come over. That was two years ago. They still come over for barbecues. They called me today, and I said, "Sorry, I gotta go to the council. You guys want to come?" And they said, "Oh, we can't make it." And so, you know. But I wanted to be here to receive this from you. And then we had a 27-year-old girl that stayed with us also. She's also a refugee. Both her parents' house was bombed. They got... They're no longer with us either. So she's a 27-year-old orphan. And she recently moved out with a man that she met here in America, and they're doing well. But it's rough seeing it firsthand, what these, what they've gone through, you know, for somebody that stepped in their country because they wanted to save them from the Nazis. And so it's, it's rough to see, and I hope it can end soon. We'll see what happens. But there's been a lot of talk about that, and not much happened. So our organization, since the beginning of this, has raised over a million dollars. And we've been donated over hundreds of thousands of dollars of medical supplies. It's mostly what we send to Ukraine, this organization, is medical supplies. Last year, I helped, I'm a mechanic, I helped fix, they bought a Humvee from an auction, a Humvee ambulance. And we did a lot of work to it to get it ready, and then we sent it over to Ukraine. It got, it got there in the end of March, and so they're using that ambulance now.
Well, thank you so much for the important work that you're doing, and it's our honor to give you the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Council President. With that, I have no further comment this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well done tonight. I appreciate it. Okay, so now it's time for public comments, which include written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. The person submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence. Good evening, Angie. Do we have any written comments or public comments?
Good evening, President Schwab. We received written comment from Brock Howell and Charles McMurray regarding the graffiti ordinance. And those were provided to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. And we do have a few people in the chambers wishing to speak, and I'll start with Jose. If you could please come to the podium and state your first, or sorry, your full name, your city of residence, and you have five minutes to speak. Thank you. Jose Villas, and I live here in Everett, District 2. And why I'm here is because we had a situation in our neighborhood on Monday at 1:00 in the morning. Basically, we had a drug deal gone wrong right outside of Andy's Place. And it involved a resident who was dealing drugs. And he stabbed somebody outside of our doorstep and left this woman to die. Luckily, they called the police and EMS, and they were ever to send her to the hospital, and she's recovering. But this is just another situation that we have brought up to Compass Health. I do meet with them every month. However, I do believe that, I'm not here to blame the city. I'm not here to blame the police. I'm here to thank you for all the help. I do believe now the blame is with Compass. There's a reluctance for them to hold themselves accountable for the lack of security. I did ask them, where were their security guards? Because they had promised us for months that they would have security 24/7, and they did not reply. They basically said that it is under investigation, and they will get back to me later, which is not good because they had told us even last week's meeting that security guards were going to be outside patrolling. As you're aware, Phase 2 just recently opened, so it's, it's a 24/7 operation. The biggest problem that we continue to have in that neighborhood is, are the residents that they continue to take in. And Compass has admitted that they're not qualified to deal with some of these patients. And there's a reluctance for Compass Health to train their security guards to handle mental health episodes, but also just basic security protocols. So when this happened outside, even their security guards probably would not have been able to handle it because they're not trained to do this. There's a reluctance for Compass to step up and hire a really good security company. There's also a reluctance even for them to train the current security guards that they have. And obviously, because when there's issues inside their facilities, whether it's at North Start and Andy's Place or the Compass Health facility, the police and EMS or fire department has to get called to deal with those situations. As a neighborhood, this is something that we keep dealing with, with patients screaming, walking around the neighborhood naked, having mental episodes on Lombard, on Oaks, on the alleys, on Broadway, 33rd, 34th Street. This is not uncommon for us to run into that. And, you know, for us residents, we're the ones who actually seem to have more compassion for these individuals who are there getting treatment. So we continue to ask ourselves, with Compass Health being in the neighborhood, they claim to have a good neighbor policy, and they're not even following their good neighbor policy. I do believe that there's a lot of resources that are being wasted if the city keeps showing up because they're not able to handle some of the security measures that they have. Why would a facility operate in a city where they can't handle some of the situations? And they, they don't want to train their staff, and they don't want to train their security guards. And in the middle, who is caught are their patients, and some of them are residents. We have seen overdoses. I think you've seen, you know, you've had residents who have come up here and told you of the overdoses. Those are the overdoses inside. But I, you know, for us, we see the overdoses that are happening outside on the street. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but the, the issue is, it's going to continue to be a situation in our neighborhood because it's a high-density neighborhood. It's happening in daylight, at night. This, this, there's no, there seems to be no end to it. We know, as residents, we do thank the police and the city for giving us the buffer zone and all the extra patrols. It does help. But we do believe going forward that Compass Health has to be held accountable for their lack of being a good neighbor. They're not showing compassion, not just to the neighborhood, but most importantly, are the patients that are being sent there. They're, they're not being treated correctly. They're not being, being given the dignity that they deserve. And the lack of security cannot continue to be where they're not policing their campus. This campus is slated to continue to grow. As you're aware, Phase 2 just recently opened. Phase 3 is about to commence here shortly in the next few years. So these issues cannot continue. We value our safety and security. So as a neighborhood representative, I'm just here to let the city council and the mayor and administration and the police department know that we thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Charles, if you could please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name's Charles McMurray. I'm a new resident, and since I've only been here about two years. But in that short time, I've had the privilege of seeing our Mayor Franklin out in the neighborhoods. And she talked about the, even two years ago, she was warning us about the budget deficits and asking us to do something. And I commend her for bringing that to our attention, but she by herself can't solve a statewide problem because everywhere I look, there are budget problems at cities, counties, school districts, and at the state. But the second thing I want to compliment Mayor Franklin about is that, just like this other gentleman had a neighborhood problem, we had a, back in December, in a DOT area that the city's leased for drainage, we had a homeless camp come in there, but the police department addressed it quickly. Is that, and we subsequently, our homeowners association with cooperation, the city extended fencing so that it would be harder to get in there. And then just a couple of weeks ago, the mayor was again helpful in getting the appropriate signage for the municipal code put up on that area, and we sincerely appreciate that. Is, the universe of good ideas is infinite, but what we have is very finite resources. Everybody thinks, including myself, I have the greatest idea, but the problem is, where do you find the resources? Because ideas are infinite, resources are finite and minute. You have an action item number nine about graffiti, and I strongly endorse the taking that action item. But that by itself is not going to solve the problem. First thing, municipal court dockets probably jammed, and then they're going to turn around and appeal probably in Superior Court. But what I encourage council to do is something like what Mayor Franklin and Councilman Bader, I've had the privilege of working with him at the Fourth of July Parade, is use your elected positions, not to turn around and try to pull gold bars out of, that don't exist, out of your office drawers, but encourage businesses, the churches, Boy Scouts, Home Depot, Lowe's, that we all need to step up on criminal gang graffiti. The gangs have been much more dedicated and effective in implementing their program than our response to it. And therefore, I'm saying that I don't expect the city alone to solve this problem. As a community, we have to solve this problem. But I'm asking you to use your bully pulpit to turn around, to go to those community groups, the churches, Boy Scouts, the Lions Club. Let's have a community response, just like you have an adopter's street program for litter. We need eliminate gang graffiti citywide because the city doesn't have the resources to do it yourself, and you shouldn't. It's a community, a community effort needs to be done.
Good job. Thank you. Matt, if you could please come to the podium? And please state your full name, city residence. You have three minutes.
Matt Fraser, District 4, South Everett. You guys are probably like, "Oh, he's back." I'm not talking about goats this time, I promise. I, I'm sitting there, and I had some things in my mind, and what I'm hearing is it's very rare in a meeting that you hear the greatest of us and maybe the worst of us. I didn't expect to be standing and having this conversation with some really, really great people tonight. It's awesome to hear. So my point to you is, I'm hearing Compass Health from Jose, I'm hearing Charles echoing thoughts in my head. And I see Fred Meyer closing. Full disclosure, I have a son that works there, so it hits home, right? What I would say is, you guys, it's incumbent on you now. We are not living in the same times that we were. We are in different times. It is incumbent upon you to come up with better ideas, different ideas, and to approach things differently, whether it's the city attorney, whether it's the mayor, city council, the planning department deciding, "Well, maybe the stadium's not the best idea. Maybe we can change things around. Maybe we can do this," right? We need to change how we're thinking, and we need to echo him, and everybody needs to step up and work together to fix this, whether it's gang violence, whether it's graffiti, whether it's our grocery stores closing. And if businesses don't want to play, they don't want to be here, kindly invite them to leave. That's where I'm at with this. We have heard this for years and years and years. Enough is enough. If you want to profit off of our hard work and our society, then you need to be a fair player in that society, and you need to have skin in the game. You should not be able to just be like, "Oops, sorry, we're going to move everybody. Oops." Because what's going to happen now? They're going to take 360 employees from that store. They're going to spread them across who knows how many stores, if they do. And then are they actually going to get to keep those jobs? Or about six months from now, are we going to hear about layoffs? Because I'm voting for layoffs. That's what I'm going to hear about. And I might have a family member impacted by that. That's fine. We'll, we'll work through that like we always do. But what I would say to you guys is you have a unique opportunity to change the game. Forget about politics, forget about partisanship, all that stuff. You have a way right now to stand up and say, "We saw a food desert coming, and we're not doing it. We're going to change this conversation, and as a city, we're going to take care of our people." And that's it. That's all I got. No goats. See? Promise. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments.
Can I just say something? We had some outstanding public speakers, three of them. And I, in a couple of months, we'll be opening up boards and commissions. So I would really highly encourage you to consider applying for our boards and commissions because there's lots of really wonderful ways to serve the community and have your voices heard and be part of the decision-making. Thank you.
Council President, earlier this week, we had another community member asked to present tonight for five minutes, and then I sent that to clerks and...
Okay, so do...
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak tonight?
That signed up to speak or was intended on speaking? Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Matter of fact, I do now remember your, your request by email, so you have five minutes to speak, and then your city of residence.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Alexis. I live in Port Gardner. And I'm calling because I've been really active in my neighborhood regarding Compass and Andy's Place. And when I got the email from Jose on Monday morning about the stabbing on our block, I was really taken aback. We have been working so hard with Compass for years, asking them to please take responsibility for what you're putting in a residential neighborhood. And all the time, it's just, "We're just landlords. We're just landlords. I'm sorry, you're not. You're taking people from Western State Hospital and putting them into a regular apartment? It's not how it works. Any other apartment complex that would receive 1,000 phone calls to EPD would be considered a nuisance property." Would be considered a nuisance property, but because they're Compass Health, they're given a pass. Everett Police Department, Everett Fire Department, Code Enforcement, Parking Enforcement. And the staff on the ground at Andy's Place are angels. All of you make it bearable to live on our block. But just tonight on my way home, I do my circles because I have to see what's going on in the neighborhood. And I pull into my alley and there's a man who was slumped over. This is not new at all. And I stopped and I was like, okay, do I have the bandwidth to engage with this today? I do. So I stop the car, roll down the window. Are you okay? He's not moving. Sir, are you okay? He's not moving. I get out of my car. I go over. He pops up. He's okay. But he's got all sorts of evidence of drug use on his body. He is not okay. And I said, sir, can I help you? Can I, can I call an ambulance and we can get you guys get wraps on your legs so that you don't have to deal with further issues? No, it's fine. No, it's fine. And I said, come on, man. Let's just help you out today. Because this is, these are my neighbors. This is what we do every day. We're not here to be NIMBY or Karens or anything like that. There is an acceptance that we have for the sophisticated gritty that we have in our neighborhood, right? I put him in my car and I took him to the walking clinic because that's what we do, right? Compass Health turns their back on people. He is a partner of somebody who lives in that building, but he's not allowed to be in there. So now he's on our street. This is every day, every corner of every block, there are groups of people every single day just hanging out, doing whatever. Loitering for the intent of drug use. We have people that are sleeping in bushes, getting loaded in bushes, all the things and Compass just goes. It's not on our property while their security stands there and watches me Narcan people on the corner. They're not engaging in the problem. They're pushing it onto our police department. They're pushing it onto our fire department and they're pushing it on to me and my neighbors. We are trauma bonded. Seriously, we are trauma bonded by the impact that Andy's Place has on our neighborhood. We need them to be successful because our city and our residents deserve a healthy environment. We deserve it. I have twenty years in recovery. I have lived in my car. I have lived in the streets. I have lived in treatment facilities. And I now twenty years clean, sixteen years business owner, six year resident homeowner of Everett. I couldn't be prouder. I couldn't be prouder of each and every one of you and the accessibility that you give us. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. If I was in Seattle, nobody would listen to me, but you guys do. So we need your help. You guys have given them over a million dollars in funding. You guys continue to need the services for the people that are living on our streets. But we need you to hold them accountable for the destruction that they're causing for our neighbors. Okay? Yesterday, EPD did a great job. They got another drug dealer out of there. There's five more. There are five more drug dealers living in that building. Okay? But Housing Hope is down the street and there was a, a crowd of children. Living at Housing Hope that got to witness all of these cops bum rush Andy's Place and go take down two drug dealers. What is the point of having all of these services? If we can't enjoy the environment that we're living in, right? Enough is enough. I need your help. I need you to talk to Tom Sebastian and be serious about this. Because everybody in this room is doing their job. Compass Health is not. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Is there anyone else here that um was intended to speak? Okay, thank you very much for all the speakers. So we'll move on to council comments. And um, Councilmember Ryan, you're up first of all.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you. Thank you to all of our commenters tonight. Um. I think I've cried like three times. We're only thirty-five minutes in, so I appreciate you for coming. And continuing to advocate for your neighbors. Sorry. Um. Okay, I can't get it together. Um, I'll get to that. Okay. First, I wanted to address Fred Myers. Thank you, Mayor Franklin, for sharing comments earlier tonight. I know we were all surprised by the news and uh, I'm devastated to hear about it. And I know that there's a lot in flux right now about it, so. I just wanted to share for the record that I stand with the workers that are impacted in the community. Um, and I also urge that um, as we move forward, that community voices and leaders aren't just included in conversations, but that their voices are centered. Uh, moving forward to make sure that we don't continue to disproportionately impact their neighborhood with any further choices. Um, goodness, uh, for Andy's Place, thank you so much for sharing. I'm sorry that happened on the way here today. Ooh, just another day in the life on Lombard. Um. Um, I'm also concerned earlier today uh with my other hat, I received uh the news that our two-on-one system is going to be consolidated into. One statewide hub located in King County. And I'm really worried about what that means for Snohomish County and for our ability to place people in places like Andy's Place and other facilities. Um, so I'll be following that closely as we move forward. That's also still kind of in the early stages and much of that is due to the uh state structural budget deficit and state funding, so. Um, I would ask administration that moving forward, we uh council could receive an update on recent emphasis patrols. And any progress that had the cities made on some of the SEPTED uh improvements to the neighborhood. And I know that, you know, we can address what's outside. Of Andy's and we can't uh always address what's going on inside, but I do think that uh like the community members have mentioned, uh, we can. I think we can review uh some of our financial contracts with Andy's Place to see if there's any contractual obligations or promises. That uh Andy's uh that Compass has made through those financial contracts um that aren't being fulfilled at this point. So I think that might be a lever that we have, so. Uh, if we could look into that, that would be great. Um. Wanted to share that next Wednesday, uh Everett Public School starts. Uh, so I would encourage folks to be careful as they're driving around schools to keep an eye out for little ones. Um. Ooh, uh. Um. That's it. Wait, no, I gotta say it. Welcome home to Sarah at Isaac Shaw.
I'll take it as my turn. Um. Yeah, it's a big evening and a big year. Uh, I didn't. Put any of my thoughts together because there are so many of them. Um, but however, when uh Fred Meyer decided to close, uh. I thankfully did get a phone call from the mayor. And so I am uh pleased at, well, A, she already mentioned what they've already begun um to, you know, get resources together. And like Matt earlier mentioned, to figure this out differently. Uh, because we definitely need to figure something out. Yeah, District Four, that's where I usually go shopping. I have a car so I can get to Wincow. Um, but it's. Going to be devastating and it's only, well, fifty-nine days now because yesterday it was sixty or whatever, so October eighteenth. Um, I am happy that uh, that we are looking at this differently and I hope that um we can really. Yeah, center the people that live in the area and uh get that space working for good. Um. If I could cuss all over the place, I would because it's very upsetting that even with all of the work that the city has put towards Fred Meyer and getting. Um, the crime down and the people working and all of that is very upsetting. So Kroger, if you're listening, I'm one person and I count for many. So boo on you. Um. And then I read in the paper about the stabbing and so I reached out to folks and so I knew a little bit about what was going on at Andy's Place again. And I'm thankful that you all came and spoke about it and um. I don't know if putting them on notice is what has happened tonight because we've put them on notice. And said their names out loud multiple times and this is still going on. And so I'm hoping that uh. We can work towards that as well. Um, I know that housing first is such an important. Part of recovery and it's times like these and companies like these that make it very difficult for the average person to understand that housing first is so absolutely important. However. You also need the resources from not only the city, but the federal government and state governments to really have all of the wraparound services that are necessary. To actually help the people that are getting in housing first and. Currently, our federal government has made executive orders and decisions to take funding away, so it's going to get worse. Before it gets better, so hang in there. Um, I'm not looking forward to it, but I'm looking forward to being a voice and hopefully helpful. Um. And thanks for the kudos, everybody that has come in to bring kudos to the people that work hard around here. Because we do, even if we disagree sometimes or a lot, we still do a good job and um it's. Only helpful when we hear all of the stories and can work that out. Uh. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey.
Thanks. Well, obviously you can tell that um all the, the stress and strain and the things going on in this tense world we're in right now isn't. Uh, council members are not uh excluded from participating or feeling all of that too. Uh. I wanted to say thank you to uh all of our brave heroes that were here. You often think of, you know, what would you do in those moments? And then you hope that you would make, make the right choice and. The fact that we have community that does and are there for our neighbors and help save a life. It's a little bit of brightness in uh the strange world that we're in at the moment. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you to them. And second, uh, the mayor's comments about boards and commissions also for everyone. Um, please get involved as much as you can. Uh, it's, that's a great outlet for people who are engaged, people who are invested in their communities, people who care about others. Uh, boards and commissions, they need you. We want you to be involved. Um. Thank you uh to Councilmember Vogely for your comments about Compass Health. Um. The, you are correct in the, it takes investment from a variety of levels to provide for these wraparound services and um. I'm sorry to hear about the dynamics and everything that's going on. And it's, it's very frustrating what we're seeing, you know. At all levels coming on down, not providing those ongoing support, funding. Because a city alone can't help fund those types of things. Um. Yeah, I will be reaching out to, to Tom to have a chat as well. Um, and uh, thank you, Councilmember Ryan, for all of your comments tonight. Um. With regards to the Kroger, I am frustrated as well and I, I second your, your sentiments on that. Um. And Sarah being back. It highlighted something this weekend. We had um the Sounds of Africa Festival in, in my district. And I was walking through Garfield Park and just experiencing just. I can't believe I live in a place where we get to experience this. It was such. An amazing event, but in the back of my mind. In trying to find out more what was going on with Sarah and. How this could happen to our neighbors, there's that little bit of fear. And I know a lot of our community is feeling that right now. I guess I'll just say lastly, I think uh Bayside is having a block party coming up, so if you're part of Bayside Neighborhood, make sure not to miss that. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate some of what my colleagues have already said, but uh. It needs to be said. I want to thank the heroes tonight. That was, it's amazing story and. That's what happens when you don't hesitate and you just jump in there and do it. So thank, thank them so much for that. Great story. And um, I'm frustrated with Fred Meyer. Uh, I think we all are. I would, I would like to see us um. In the short term, try to get our transit system where we can take um trips to uh Target, Walgreens. Grocery outlet and Wincow really um and educate that community on where they can pick up and. And get to those other places for shopping. Um, and then I'm disappointed with the Compass Health. I know we worked hard in our committee to really felt we made some progress, so um. I'd like to work with administration on seeing how we can. Get back in there and make it turn around a little bit. So thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Council President, can I just respond real quickly? Um, thank you for your comments around transit. Um. When um, when I was notified of this, we called uh all departments together, including transit and I think there's about thirty people at a meeting. Uh, discussing all the different ways we can try to, in the immediate term, support that neighborhood and with access. And so um, I don't have the results of where they're at with that work, but I do know that tomorrow. One of our team members is going door to door with a map of all the different um grocery outlets and sharing that with um. The key partners there. And uh, one of the things that we discussed was the possibility of looking at increasing. Um, trips in that area and making sure that there's uh whatever we can do to increase access, whether it's orga cards or whatnot, and I'll look forward to reporting back on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Zerlingo.
Uh, well, a couple of comments with respect to Fred Meyer. Um, that uh. For ten years or so, I lived uh on Casino Road and on Holly Drive, both sides. Fred Meyer was my store. Walked to and from that store a million times, so I was really disappointed in this and started when I first heard about these closures. Uh, especially the one in Tacoma a little over a week ago, started looking at some of the neighborhoods and the situations with those stores and it's. Become pretty clear this isn't about crime. This is a financial thing rooted in the priorities of people a couple of thousand miles away. Uh, but we will deal with it as the mayor has discussed the best, uh, the best we can. Um, just sad to see for a store that was a special place for me. Um. Let's see, in terms of other duties, I, I'm part of the Snohomish County Regional Law and Justice Commission along with council members from other cities. I represent Everett and other cities on the Regional Law and Justice Commission. Uh, the latest meeting was yesterday, first of two meetings to discuss uh. The justice system specifically translation and interpretation services in our system. We have a really diverse population, all of whom are entitled to a fair justice system, so. Lots of work to go that way. If you're interested in this, these are public meetings and the next one, the second on translation and uh and interpretation will be held about a month from now. And then with respect to, I'm a longtime Silver Lake resident and have had too many cases where we had reports of uh drownings in the lake over the. Three decades or so that I've lived there. Um, and. You know, in the spirit of genuine appreciation for good deeds and generosity, uh, the term hero is often used pretty broadly. Um, and I really share the urge to recognize those who act for the benefit of others. But I think it's sometimes that means a special distinction can be overlooked. And I'm sorry Gage is not here, but uh I do feel compelled to use the word hero specifically when somebody chooses to take action to help someone else. And in doing this puts themselves at risk. Uh, that's a special category of serving and helping others. And I'm really, really happy to see that it applies here and we got to recognize a hero tonight. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Well, uh, going last isn't always the best. Um. Uh, I'll just start off and say that I'm distraught over the closing of the Fred Meyer. It's very difficult not to get emotional about it. Um. Not only to the loss of, to our community and the access um to fresh produce um. And to other products, but also the loss of jobs. I, I do agree with something that was said earlier about. Whether those jobs are going to be maintained. Um, second, I'm disappointed in the um, the mixed messages that I see on both from the company spokespeople perhaps and maybe online. Um, is this a crime issue? Is this a crime issue? And I will, I'll address that in a minute. Or is this just a corporate decision based on, on profits? And uh, there's no surprise that during the the one billion dollars that the company spent on the merger and the ongoing dispute with the UFCW three thousand and labor disputes, that this isn't some sort of coincidence. So I, you know, I'm, I'm a stock owner, just like um, anyone else, probably a lot of us in our 401ks. And uh, these are some of the things when we make decisions and our portfolios that maybe we should consider is that the health and the the involvement in company. There, I'd like to address a little bit about the crime in that area. This is nothing new and retail theft um, is nothing new and it's, it's a global problem. It's a regional problem. This council and with the mayor um, has been addressing this problem. Matter of fact, you can go back to our uh, council retreat. And we actually had a presentation from the National Retail Federation, a representative. Matter of fact, he also gave a, a a presentation to the Snoamish County Cities and Towns, which um, myself and Councilmembers Zerlingo attend a lot. Um, and actually Jennifer Gregerson a lot too, and the mayor. Um, so this is something that our community regionally has been addressing. And you know, and in our retreat, we asked the representatives, um, what can we do? Because we know that there's some challenges in that area. I mean, you try buying jeans at Fred Meyer without a lock, right? You have to get unlocked to try on a pair of jeans. We're well aware of the challenges. And they, they told us in January, uh, pass the buffer zone and uh, continue and increase our blitz, our focused um, even even somewhat undercover operations of our police department, which we all agreed to do. And I know we've been doing it and we've been seeing the results. So I'm very disappointed when a community asks, what can we do? And we follow through and they still make the decision to leave. Um, how can you trust um, these types of organizations when do this? And we were all in to try to, we know the importance of that, of the, of the, of that store. So I don't know what more we could have done. I'm sure there's always can do more and we will continue to work on this issue because we do have other stores in our community. Um, so very disappointed. I I just wanted to share that perspective. And I can tell you, I don't know how many cities that um, invited the National Federation, Retail Federation into a city council. Not many. I think we were one of the first or second on the West Coast. And they actually thanked us too, which I'm a little confused about for inviting us in, so. The second, the second thing, of course, is the topic. Isn't that as Andy's place in Compass Health? And um, as I was thinking the process, and I really appreciate the the feedback, I would like to consider um, a financial incentive for Compass Health. And I haven't discussed this with the mayor as anyone, so you guys might push me out the door later another time, but I think, you know, we, we passed the ordinance that uh, encourages businesses um, that have health home care and other services that don't have enough staffing. And if they are, if there's a large frequency of our emergency services, those facilities. I don't know what the legal part of it, but I would like to consider um, some sort of in financial incentive if we have services that we're providing, even if within a certain radius of a business that um, had related connections to um, a care facility like Compass Health. So I know that's, I know the facility is needed. But there needs, obviously, at this point, there needs to be some sort of incentives for them to um, not only those that are in the walls of the building, but those within a proximity of the building. So I'd just like to consider that.
We will absolutely look into that.
Um, and for the last part, I had this, I don't know how more personal I can be about Silver Lake, but I have, as an emergency worker, been there. And I have been there as a civilian, not on duty, in a drowning. And um, there, like, it's very personal. And um, and I have said, one of the reasons why I run, have run for council, because a lot of people ask me, because you know, there's a lot of a lot of heat up here at times, right? And um, it's the compassion that people that live in, occupying Everett and care so much. And the integrity and the courage that all of us, that our community has is incredible and is displayed at every council meeting and um, you know, you have um, that saying, it takes a village. Well, it does, sometimes. And um, I, another thought I had is um, I'm very thankful for the nurses that live and work in our community and play and decide to stay. And so when we talk about housing and providing for our emergency workers and our nurses, wow, here's another great example of how important um, housing is in our community. So thank you for indulging me. As you guys know, mostly I've worked right through this process, but it was a big night. So thank you. Okay, so uh, moving on to administration.
Jennifer. Well, my tears have subsided. Thank you all for going first. Appreciate it. So proof that staff are working fast on our response to the closure of Fred Meyer, that flyer that the mayor mentioned, here it is. It just got printed at about six twenty PM or so. We even fixed a typo that I noticed and now it's even better. Um, in Spanish and English. Like the mayor mentioned, we have staff distributing it tomorrow. And I have a few extra copies if folks feel like they could find a good home for it. It highlights the um, uh, current transit routes uh, and the locations of grocery, retail pharmacies and food pantry options that are lots of focus for within one mile, but also up to within three miles. Uh, if folks are considering the bus as a, as an option, you can, and you maybe haven't ridden it before, or looking at new places you need to go to, you can call um, four two five, two five seven, uh, seven, 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 seven for trip assistance. It's um, Everett Transit has that uh, weekdays eight to five. And then at the bottom of the flyer, there's a link to our website. It's everitwa.gov slash south stores. That's live on the site now um, and has the map and some other links about accessing transit and how to connect with the city and how to get questions answered on, and wow, we have a great team who who really have rallied over the last um, feels like a long time since that announcement, but it's a short time to get some of this stuff put together. So uh, so I have that. Oh, yeah. Uh, and then second, uh, the boards and commissions uh, application is actually open right now. So uh, so if um, the interested active folks that came tonight or others that um, that council members want to pass along, that pass this along to, it's on the boards and commissions page, so everitwa.gov slash boards and commissions. It's the first link at the top. Um, applications are open for a couple of months through, literally a couple of months through October twentieth. And there are a ton of, of openings, maybe like fifteen or more than that, um, positions that we're accepting applications for, so. Um, spread the word. We would love to have a nice big pool. And then I guess I'll, maybe I'll just mention, because I don't have more to say about it, but that this upcoming year is our um, charter review process at the city. So there's a uh, look, we're gonna, we're kind of digging into the process for that still, so um, but we will be opening that up after some conversation with mayor and with council about forming that charter review commission. Differently than folks that will see names on their ballot in November, this, the, in the city, um, and the mayor picks some folks and the council picks some members, and then that group um, has to have their first meeting by the beginning of February. So it's okay if we have a little bit more time before we open that application process up, but we're working on it um, with legal help too, so. Okay, that's it. I'll pass the mic this way.
Thank you. And on to our city attorney, David Hall.
No report. Um, we are requesting a ten-minute executive session, uh, pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, I to discuss settlement of a worker's compensation claim with council action to follow.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our consent items. We have four consent items. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved on the consent items.
Councilor Ryan, seconds.
Uh, motion and seconds been made and we went from dramatic to the boring. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Ryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zerlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes, thank you. So moving on to our proposed action items. We have um, council bill two five zero eight, four two, four three, four four, and four, um, yeah, four four, and their second reading. So items five, six, and seven, are there any questions from council? Councilmember Zerlingo?
Well, just one comment, because there's been some discussion lately about uh, ARPA funds, and this would be in reference to uh, twenty-five oh eight dash forty-three. This is the uh, Lions Park Lighting Project. Uh, that's uh, in my district and a uh, special place to me. I really enjoy that park and, but I've also seen it have some pressures on it, a lot of effort over the past several years, not only by the city, but by uh, the Boys and Girls Club next door. Uh, and as part of my ARPA uh, allocations, um, I uh, allocated money to actually all four of the Boys and Girls Clubs that are here in Everett, two of which are actually in my district. Uh, but also then part of that uh, subsequent uh, money went to the uh, to this lighting project and uh, supported the uh, skate dot. So I think that's a good example of how we take a really gem of a park and maximize the use of it and uh, handle some of the concerns and questions with respect to the safety issues that uh, that uh, might otherwise prevent it from being so fully used. That's also a good place for future housing development in terms of density in our city, where we have some very large lots that will allow some additional density, uh, and with things like parks and amenities nearby there and good uh, transit and street access. So it's kind of all of one piece, and that's sort of the thing I wanted to comment tonight is that this is one measure here, but it's part of a constellation of uh, of features and factors and spending that are gonna go on that should make that uh, an increasingly great, great place to live.
Any other comments on items five, six, or seven? Okay, and the final hearing for those three will be um, August twenty-seventh. Okay, moving on to council bill or um, item number eight, council bill two five zero eight dash forty-five. First reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Municipal Court Access Control Installation Project Fund Three Four Two, Program Zero Five Three, to accumulate all costs for the project. Third and final reading is September third, two thousand twenty-five. Was there any information? Okay, was there any questions from council on item number eight? Okay, we'll um, move on to our um, action item. Item number nine, council bill two five zero seven dash four one, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance creating a civil infraction against graffiti tagger for unauthorized application of illegal graffiti, amending chapter ten point six two Everett Municipal Code. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Ryan said moves.
Seconded.
Okay, motion and seconds been made, so discussion or questions? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Um, so there's uh, from the discussions that we had at the first and second reading, there's a few um, amendments that are on the table. Um, so I'd be happy to make those amendments now, or uh, if we wanted to have discussion first, maybe.
Yeah, amendments would be appropriate now.
Great. Um, so under section ten dot sixty-two dot zero five five, section A, uh, in response to Brandon's comments last week about aligning some of the language to make sure that it was uh, code accurate. Uh, there are some outlined um, amendments listed, but I'm happy to read it out loud. Uh, so the
Yeah, if you could just read the, the change directly, and then we can discuss it.
You're also welcome to do all three at once.
Okay, just read the amendments and we'll uh, and then whatever you want to do. Then we'll discuss it after you.
So there's amendments to section A, B, and then adding a section D. So A would read, "In addition to any other civil or criminal penalties or other remedies authorized by law or equity, a graffiti tagger shall be subject to a civil infraction punishable by a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per illegal graffiti violation and may further be ordered to make restitution to the responsible public agency or responsible private party of costs incurred by the responsible public agency or responsible private party, including but not limited to all labor and materials costs of abating, to all labor and materials costs of abating the illegal graffiti." Uh, section B would now read, would be amended to read, "It is a complete defense that the graffiti tagger obtained the express permission of the responsible public agency or responsible private party prior to applying the graffiti. The responsible tagger, the, uh, excuse me, the graffiti tagger has the burden of establishing this defense by a preponderance of evidence." And then adding section D, responsibility for juveniles. "Any parent or legal guardian of a juvenile aged sixteen or seventeen who is found to have committed a violation of paragraph A of this section is liable for any restitution imposed under paragraph C of this section."
You wouldn't have to have something in writing to share with council.
Those are all in the packet.
Oh, in the packet?
It's the second, the, like, the newest supporting document at the end of that um, agenda item and um, and I believe there's also a friendly amendment to change C.
Okay, so a motion's been, a motion's been made. Is there a second? Okay, second?
Second. Um, I have a question and then a friendly.
Okay, Councilmember Fossey, question on the motion.
The so are you also moving D then about the resident? Okay, um, on there, the restitution um, that it references, that's also the community service. So it's saying that the adult would do the community service?
I would check with Lacey on who would be responsible to fulfill that requirement.
You have a question on the amendment?
Yes. Um, the court would um, impose a financial order for the restitution um, upon a finding of committed. Um, and then um, in the event that the juvenile could not or would not pay, um, the financial burden could be imposed against the adult. The community service burden um, cannot be imposed against another person. Is that the um, community restitution? That's correct. It does clarification, because it just says restitution in item D. And so it makes me think that any of the restitution uh, would fall on the parent, which I think defeats maybe the purpose. We could, uh, if I may offer something to be crystal clear, um, at the very end of the amendment include language, and I'll just recommend accept community restitution. Okay.
EX or ACC?
EX. Okay. I would support that.
Councilmember Fossey makes a
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment. Can we have, we can have friendly amendments, correct? Yeah.
Okay, and then I have another friendly amendment.
Since you're the, since you're the, since you second it, you can accept it also as the second part, yeah.
It's a friendly or friendlier?
Yeah.
The friendlier amendment. Um, uh, in uh, C, it said restitution imposed pursuant to section is payable immediately. A motion that graffiti tagger supported by showing of financial hardship, uh, insert uh, or other extenuating circumstances, uh, if there's some reason that may be there because financial hardship is very, very narrow. There may be other reasons a judge may determine um, extenuating circumstances that there should be um, community restitution or or something else uh, in play that the kid would benefit from.
I accept that.
So there's two friendly amendments accepted. Okay.
Yay.
All right. All right, so back on the amendment as friendly amended. Um, any more discussion?
Oh, I have questions and stuff, or I guess we would vote on the amendments and then the underlying. Okay, great.
Okay, so right now we'll vote on the amendment. Okay, um, clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zerlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes, okay, on to the um, um, motion as amended.
I was just curious, uh, there had been public comment and then also council members had brought up about the desire for a free wall that where people can graffiti. So uh, we didn't hear an update last week on that, so just wanted to see if there had been further discussions or if a free wall had been identified. There have been further discussions. I have um, input from parks and um, placemaking um, folks and then, and police department. And I'm weighing all of that and I'm chatting with um, administer, other members of the administration and the mayor tomorrow probably. So um, yeah, so we are working on it, but I don't have like a, a super clear, not, not a recommendation tonight, but it's in the works. Um, and since you turned to me, I can also add that legal staff, like, we focused on this change and we're excited that it's close to adoption. Um, but staff and mayor also Um, but staff and mayor also recognize that we haven't looked at the graffiti ordinance in a while and there's some improvements that we could make, some definitions that haven't been touched in a while. So we're gonna take a closer look at all of that, pending workload balance and then some other ordinances that we are already bringing forward and then we'll bring back some other updates in the future. So this didn't answer your question, but you know, I had the mic, so.
Okay, so, so before us, we have action item nine as, as amended. Any other discussion? Councilmember Fossey.
Thank you so much for saying that um, just for record uh, with concerns about making sure that we are going after the bad behavior um, and that intent is very clear and that we are not going after, you know, garage sale signs and kids doing chalk on the sidewalk. So I appreciate that future uh, changes will come. Um, and with all of that statement, I'm happy to vote.
Okay, so before us is action item number nine as amended. Councilmember Ryan.
I've uh, comments, but if anybody else has questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so put on my readers because I'm at that age now. Um, so a couple of months ago, when I met with Mayor Franklin at our regularly scheduled mention, uh, monthly meeting, I had mentioned a graffiti ordinance. I'm really glad that it's coming forward today. I will be a yes folks. I do think that prolific graffitiers should be held accountable for destruction, but I do feel like what's before us is a bit incomplete and in a broader strategy. Um, I would love, I'm glad to hear that there's the possibility of a free graffiti wall and I, I'm hopeful that that will come to fruition. Uh, I think, you know, I was looking at examples of graffiti which were evident in prehistoric times and there's somehow a human need to graffiti. I think we all, we are all guilty of putting our name on a public restroom stall. Um, and so it's important that we direct that to a place where people uh, can uh, exercise that, where it doesn't vandalize public or private property. So there's the redirection portion that I'd love to see come to fruition, but there's also the prevention portion that's missing today. Um, I've been hearing frustrations from residents, like uh, folks on Lombard about derelict properties that attract this type of activity or purposely vacant storefronts that give people a sense that no one is watching and that may perpetuate uh, this issue. I spoke with the Downtown Everett Association today. That was the first that they had heard from the city on this ordinance and uh, they shared that just this year, year to date, uh, our uh, Downtown Everett Association has removed two thousand graffiti tags just in our downtown uh, core. It's a tremendous amount of time and effort and cost for materials that they've been absorbing to address this issue. They also have a database with pictures and locations tagged of every piece of graffiti that they have removed since two thousand twenty twenty, which is available to the city. So if we want to have actual teeth behind this, they have a database full of uh, of evidence. Uh, so assuming that today's uh, vote is a yes, uh, passes, I just wanted to share some expectations moving forward as chair of the Parks and Built Envir- co-chair, my apologies, uh, the Parks and Built Environment Committee, uh, I'd love to hear an update on the work that's being done by our summer interns to identify and map vacant storefronts downtown, which may be attracting this type of behavior. I would also like to uh, renew efforts to reevaluate process improvements to hold derelict property owners accountable for increased public safety calls, including uh, financial components like leans on properties uh, for overuse of public services. Uh, I'd like uh, to hear a commitment from administration to work with business owners and groups like the Downtown Everett Association, the Everstation District Alliance Chamber, so that they can be aware of uh, how they can report and be partners in the uh, enforcement part, portion of this. And I'd also like, I look forward to further uh, discussions about the commitment to a free wall because uh, this ordinance alone won't eliminate graffiti in our city. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Zarlingo?
Well, one slightly related thing, bringing back to the issue with respect to Lions Park and Boys and Girls Clubs and the free wall. Um, I think part of the reason that I and others have pushed for more resources for juveniles is um, it isn't just a matter of crime of police enforcement, it is a matter of providing opportunities and, and um, better models and support. And so I think the free wall is a good example of that. Uh, Boys and Girls Club have been working on those kinds of things. It's sort of an obligation of ours to provide those sorts of outlets and guidance and opportunities uh, that otherwise if we don't do that, we have a worse problem with juvenile crimes. So I support this as well.
Okay. Councilmember Vogel.
I'm just super happy that the free wall is getting so much talk because um, I, I remember bringing it up, I think, pre-COVID and didn't get nearly this much uh, talk time. So it's awesome. Um, thank you all uh, for doing that. And then it's, I was just out buying spray paint the other day at a certain store on Colby. Um, and it was awesome because there was a few other people that were also waiting for the doors to open so that they could get their spray paint, so they could go do their allowed uh, graffiti art at some, I don't know where they, I didn't ask questions, you know, because you just don't ask questions all the time, but um, I'm happy that uh, we are focused on the ugly and stuff, you know, like we've talked about it, the tagging that is just blech. Um, and that there are still many opportunities for people to go forward and uh, do it legally, uh, because it is a beautiful art form and a free wall would be helpful for that. Um, and so uh, and I'm also glad that there's um, the public restitution, you know, not necessarily only a financial um, burden, uh, you know, but you gotta clean stuff up, um, if you make the mess. So um, that's all. I'm just.
Okay, thank you very much for the discussion. So we're, take a vote on item, action item number nine. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, no further business. We will be going into executive session for ten minutes with expected, um, with expected action. Thanks. Okay, um, executive session is complete. Uh, uh, I'll just announce our, our city attorney, David Hall. He has adjusted a motion.
We are hoping for a motion to authorize a mayor to execute an agreement settling a worker's compensation claim by former firefighter Jason Hague in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand dollar, one hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Councilor Ryan makes the motion to approve the settlement.
Second.
Motion and seconds made. Any more discussion? Okay, um, clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie.
Yes.